Three minutes? Yeah.
Why three minutes?
My phone says four fifty-seven, too.
Mike's not gonna be here.
I don't know. Here he comes. Oh, you don't. It's not my.
No.
I don't know.
Coming late. Good afternoon and welcome to today's meeting of the Fairmont School Board. It is Tuesday, September ten, two thousand nineteen. Roll call is all present except Mike Edman. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will begin the meeting tonight with the tax abatement hearing. And so do we have individuals who would like to speak? Representative of the CHS?
Yes.
Okay. Please come forward and introduce yourself.
Hello, I'm Brandon Nordstrom. I'm the plant manager at the soybean processing plant here in Fairmont. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk about this potential project. Just a little bit about CHS here at Fairmont and what we do. We began operations in two thousand and three. What we do is we purchase soybeans and we then process those soybeans into soybean meal, which is a feed for livestock, primarily pigs and chickens. And then we also produce soybean oil, which is sent up to our plant in Mankato, where it's further refined into food-grade, a food-grade oil. And it goes into various food products you might find. We have fifty-two full-time employees at the plant. We are planning a major renovation project. This project would allow us to expand our plant capacity by about thirty percent approximately. If we proceed with our project on schedule, we expect construction to be completed in late two thousand, two thousand twenty-one. Total project cost for this project is expected to be approximately a hundred million dollars, with estimated three point one million dollars being spent on local materials or service providers here in Martin County. Specifically, we'll be looking at adding five buildings or storage silos on site and then modifying two existing buildings. We are seeking a tax abatement on these new structures. These new structures' value is approximately five point three million. That's what I have and be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anybody have any questions?
Does that include any additional infrastructure that needs to be added out there, such as water, sewer, electricity that needs to be upgraded?
So there is a little bit. We do have a maintenance work going on right now, addressing some water lines and electrical lines. So it's kind of tied. It's both maintenance and it will help us with the potential expansion. So it is kind of a dual, a dual thing going on right now.
Brandon, talk a little bit about the increased capacity that this project will allow.
Sure. So we will be needing to purchase an additional thirty, thirty percent more soybeans. We're going to have to track that. And maybe I could have Scott speak to the economic impact that may have.
Scott Erdahl, I'm the Director of Business Development and Risk Management for our Processing Food Ingredients Division for CHS. So approximately fifty percent of our soybeans come right within the Martin County area, right? So, and then if you take the feed component of that expansion, about fifty percent of our soybean meal, our feed-grade products that are shipped, are shipped local to the local hog integrators, poultry producers, and also turkey growers as well. So from a local economic impact, it, I don't have a specific dollar amount, but it is, it is sizable.
I have, I have personally been in the bean plant because my husband hauls the beans there also. I, you know, we, we sell some right off the field to that, but otherwise some does go in, in storage and then we sell later in the year. But I have been through it. It's very interesting. So if anybody ever wants to see that. But there'd be late nights where I have nothing else to do and so I'll ride in the semi and, and ride along. And it's just interesting how that, it all works. And it's just a system that works really nice and, but it's kind of fun to ride along.
And my understanding is that with the increased capacity of the new plant, the addition is that you'll be able to process the trucks quicker.
Right.
It's not, it's not slow now.
Yeah.
It's quick.
I'm talking about the number of trucks that get through.
Let me address that.
Well, through, but even dumping the trucks is fairly quick.
Right. Yeah, so that, that's an important point. So during harvest, we aren't adding any additional bean storage. So I don't foresee this project affecting, affecting how quickly we'll receive beans. We're always trying to improve that. We have committed to additional parking space on site. So we will be, we'll, we will be getting that done by the time the project is complete. So it'll alleviate that. The thing the project might help address is times where we've got trucks waiting to pick up meal. Oftentimes, we've run out of meal in our storage bins. This project is giving us a little more storage of that finished meal. So we hopefully have that product on hand. Plus, with the increased capacity of the plant, we're more likely to be able to fill those trucks faster. So I think it'll help address that issue. But certainly the parking lot should, should help address it.
And Joe, maybe you could review the fact, or just the background, the county and the city have.
Right, the city of Fairmont and the Martin County Commissioners, they have voted unanimously to support this tax abatement. And I'm hoping the board will follow suit on that because I think it's a great thing for our region. The economic impact, the short-term economic impact is, is huge. One of our counselors, Scott Gertis, and Jenny, I don't know if you were there when they first built the plant, but Scott tells me that when they built the original plant, we picked up twenty or twenty-five additional students for a couple of years because of the contractors moving to town. And so my guess is that I would hope that if some of the people that are employed by the building of the new addition and putting in the new equipment, if they want a great school to go to, they would certainly consider ours. But I think from a standpoint, especially right now with the agriculture economy being challenged, I think it's important that anything we can do locally to keep our product here and have it be processed here and have the meal be processed here and used here. And, you know, Mankato's only sixty miles away and as long as those trucks go through Truman and keep the speed limit down, they'll be fine. But, and we're, I'm really happy, too, that I think the fact that you've spoken multiple times at the county and I know you went to the city. And we do appreciate the fact that from a corporate standpoint, that you're looking at some of the issues that were brought up before by some regional residents. And it looks like you are addressing those issues and those are greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Anybody else like to speak?
Mike Shepley, County Assessor. I just wanted to give you some mechanics of how the abatement would work. There seems to be a little confusion out there about that. The, the economic incentive abatement or abatement agreement that you would sign and, and grant the abatement to CHS has terms in it and it have an amount in a, in a time period. And what that is telling you, what you're signing off on, is the amount of tax on the increase in value. And this increase in value is not a hundred million. They're going to spend a hundred million, but there's only about five point three million of it that's real estate taxable for, for real estate taxation purposes. It's the real property. It's the holding, uh, uh, storage properties. It's the structures. It's not the equipment and the piping and the processing equipment. So there's only about five point three million of it that's taxable. And the schools portion of that is about thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars per year. And I believe we're doing a ten-year ask here, so it's about three hundred and seventy-seven thousand at the near ask. The mechanics of that are, as the project is completed, our office, County Assessor, will add the value to that parcel. We will send a bill out to CHS with that increased tax amount on it. They will pay that bill. When that bill is paid, we will request the abatement be sent back to them then. So it's an in and it's an out. The impact to the existing taxpayers is a net zero. So the, the levy has to increase and you'll hear that word come about, but there's another part of that transaction where CHS is actually paying for that exact increased amount. So it's net to the existing taxpayers, zero for those ten years. What could happen, and, and this is just a point of information, if for some reason this requires spending by a jurisdiction, say the county needs to improve the road out there in order to reach it, and they say this is due to the CHS project, then the county spending goes up, then it affects every taxpayer. So does that make sense? I, I gave you one scenario where there's no additional county spending, no effect to the existing taxpayers. The second potential is, yes, there is additional spending and it affects everyone. Does that make sense? I have heard no one say in this project that any of that spending is going to happen. So as far as I know, all the information I have is, it's a net zero impact to existing taxpayers. After the ten-year, the tax abatement is up, CHS will continue to pay on that added value. If this is the only thing that ever happens in taxation world, is the CHS thing, existing taxpayers will see their bills go down. Okay, now don't take that literally because everything in the world's changing every single, every single day in the taxation world, right? Values increase or decrease. New properties are built, old ones are torn down. So I just said taxes go down, that hardly ever happens, but that's the math. If CHS will continue to pay that increased amount, it should affect existing taxpayers in a positive way.
And Mike, I understand that CHS currently is the largest single taxpayer in the city limits?
I think that's true, yeah.
Over seven hundred thousand dollars a year that it currently pay and those taxes will continue to be paid.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, they currently pay.
Introduce yourself.
I'm Lindsay Price. I'm with the City of Fairmont. Yes, they do currently pay seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars per year in property taxes. They will continue over this ten-year period to pay that and to be the number one taxpayer. So unless nothing else happens over the ten years, in ten years, they'll still be the highest taxpayer.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Any other questions? Any other comments? Okay, so we will close the public hearing?
Yep.
And we'll go back to the board meeting. And we will take up where we left off. Okay. Okay, Dan.
Under new business, under Section A, I would make a motion to approve the property tax abatements and authorizing execution of a tax abatement and business subsidy agreement between Independent School District twenty-seven fifty-two and the parties mentioned in Appendix B.
Second.
Okay, any questions?
Like, to me, this is a pretty easy decision to make. Anything in the community that increases, that increases our economic prosperity, that brings families in, is good for our schools. And I don't see how this isn't. And I'm very glad that we're, that we have the opportunity to take a stand on this and to take a vote. And.
I agree.
I agree, wholeheartedly.
Okay, we'll have now an official vote. By my roll call. Dan?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Nicole?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mari?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Congratulations. Okay, and now we'll return to the agenda with, after approved minutes from last time.
I move to approve August twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen, School Board Meeting Minutes as presented.
I'll second it.
I got it.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And the agenda.
I move to make, I move to make a change in the agenda.
Okay.
An old business I would like to remove from the table, a motion that was presented at last meeting regarding tax abatement for properties, uh, property, property taxes.
Okay. And then I would like to just, I have some minutes and stuff to, just to do us, Southern Plains employee.
Okay, let's do, this is, this is a motion, so let's, we need a second on that.
No, we, I thought we were just doing the agenda, the changes of the agenda.
Give you a second.
I made a motion to remove it from the table and put it on the agenda.
Oh, you did now?
Yeah.
Okay. I thought we were doing that later, sorry.
Okay.
Well, then I will second your motion.
Thank you.
Want me to take a vote on that right now?
Yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now Julie, you're on.
Then I will add to the agenda, the board reports, Southern Plains Educational Co-op. I have just a couple of things I'd like to bring to the board's attention, so.
Okay. And with that change?
I'll second it.
Okay. So motion to approve the agenda as amended. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Motion is accepted. We will move to Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. Just a couple of things in your packet distributed just tonight, an update on enrollment. And we are up twenty students. The, looking here, the elementary, we have eight hundred and forty-three students, at the high school, eight hundred and forty. And the largest grade level going through our system right now is seventh grade. We have a hundred and fifty-two. And that really kind of surprised us today when we looked at that. And that, because we had a hundred, let's see, last year, we, let's see, last year, I'm looking at how many sixth graders we had. Let's see here, last year, we had a hundred and thirty-two sixth graders and now we have a hundred and fifty-two seventh graders. And we have one of our counselors in the audience and I think they registered a lot of new students that came in, right, Jenny? You, you registered a lot of new students that came in. Yes, you did. The other thing I just want to highlight, too, you know, when we created our budget last spring, we budgeted for a hundred kindergarten students. And we actually, right now, have a hundred and twenty-six. And the new kindergarten teacher that we hired, who was originally from Fairmont, she arrived in Fairmont yesterday from Alaska. And so she started working with our six, with our kindergarten group. And we're very glad to have her on board. And so we're very pleased about that. And I just got off the football field a few minutes ago because Coach Mahoney has been named by the Minnesota Vikings as the High School Coach of the Week. And I actually took a photograph of, of Coach getting an award by somebody from the Vikings organization that came down.
Nice.
And I think they also donated a thousand dollars to our school district for this. And then Matt gets to go to a football game. And I felt kind of bad because I pulled up with my Chicago Bear bumper sticker on. But we still got, we still got the award. And so very pleased with that. Last thing I'll just make, mention is, I want to distribute to the board. You can read this on your own time, but this is a report that is put out by the Minnesota Department of Education and it's called "The State of Our Students." I'll make sure, Brooke, you get one before you leave. But there's a lot of good data in here about the state of our students and the state of Minnesota. And it's a very good read. We do have official results now of our MCA scores from last year and we're still analyzing those. And once we, give us another week or so at the next board meeting, we'll present some more detail on how our students did in their math and their reading and their science. But overall, we're off to a great start. Very pleased with our new administrators. All of, all of our principals are doing just a superb job and our new Director of Curriculum is doing wonderful. I've talked to a lot of folks, a lot of teachers. I think it's one of the smoothest starts I've ever seen. And so I see some heads nodding in the audience. Okay, good.
Okay.
Now, this is just Minnesota students, correct? This is, this isn't anything for Fairmont students compared to Minnesota students?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
It's a total look at the entire state.
Can I ask a question about enrollment?
Yes.
Are these numbers reflective of students that are enrolled or students that have actually come to school?
That have been present. Physically present.
Yes and yes. And let me explain that. The, we looked at the numbers. We do have forty-nine students that are registered with us that are doing some online classes. And so, and some students are full-time and some students are taking one, two, or three classes. And the four classes that they're doing online most frequently, American Government, Economics, Composition, and Speech. Those are the four that students are taking online. And I met with Mary Cole today. What she tries to do is take a look at the number of students that are taking online classes and she tries to make these to be net numbers.
And then those are online for ours, to our school? Are there, is it different places that they're doing online?
Mostly online through Minnesota West.
Okay.
I, I think almost all of these are. And of course, in Minnesota, a student can take an online class starting as early as kindergarten. And so, but, and one of the things that we're looking at is, you know, Mrs. Ness is working on what we need to do to become an online school ourselves. And she's doing some great research on that and working with different schools to see what we need to do. Because we have some faculty that certainly are capable of teaching an online class.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move to finances. We have donations. Dan?
In Appendix A, we have a resolution to accept donations and grants as provided by Minnesota statutes. First, we have from Culligan Water Conditioning, one thousand and forty dollars for the High School Special Education Department and College and Career Exploration. That was a fundraiser that they did at an open house that they had recently. And the Martin County Area Foundation has offered five thousand nine hundred dollars for the Junior High Robotics Program. Also from Fairmont Evangelical Covenant Church, fifty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents for school supplies for children in need. And finally, from Bullmore Lanes, we have one hundred dollars for Fairmont Elementary School teacher supplies. So I make a motion that we accept those donations and grants.
I'll second that one.
Any questions? The roll call. Dan?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Nicole?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mari?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thanks, Dan. Chris, finances?
All right, I'm going to start with the bigger check run. I'm going to jump down to check number six-three-one-zero-six to Aid Bailey, LLP, for eighteen thousand dollars. That is for services that they provided for our fiscal year nineteen audit. Jumping to check number six-three-one-two-five to Malaca High School. That is for cross-country entry fees. There's a few fees in here for similar things. Next one is check number six-three-one-three-two to Nelson Blacktopping. That is updating some of the parking lot by the vocational programming area. Next one I'm going to review is check number six-three-one-four-five to Southern Plains for one hundred and sixteen thousand. That is our final payment for fiscal year nineteen. In total, in fiscal year nineteen, we spent, we, we paid Southern Plains about seven hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. That's it for that check run. The second check run, I didn't have anything in particular to go over there. And with the wire transfers, pretty normal stuff there. An ideas payment in there, our first of the year. Some IMA revenue as well, but other than that, pretty normal stuff.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Julie?
If there's no questions, I then would offer a motion to approve the wire transfers for eight-twenty-three-nineteen to nine-five-nineteen and payment of the September fifth, two thousand nineteen bills. And I know there was a single check for that, that fiscal year nineteen, that one there. It wasn't listed, but for that one as well.
Can I get a second?
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay, any questions, discussion? All of us in favor? Is that aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We'll move to new business. Oh, we're going to do the old business, okay. Okay, so, you going to do that? Who's going to do?
Well, I'm going to have Lindsay talk a little bit about this. This is about the, this is a motion for the tax abatement for housing, Lindsay. this is a motion for the tax abatement for housing, Lindsey. And at the last, just to explain a little bit, at the last meeting that we had, we had a board member that questioned kind of the process. And one thing that you did for the board is that you did put together a nice packet to kind of explain that what we're approving tonight, if we do approve this, we're approving the concept. And then, once, so why don't you go ahead and walk us through the procedure that will happen?
Yep, so, what we're looking at is proposing a 10-year tax abatement on any multifamily housing that's built within the city of Fairmont until 20, until December 31, 2024. And basically, what we're, what we're looking at doing is incentivizing new housing builds, because there is such a shortage in our community right now. So, many of our businesses are actually looking at expanding, but because of the, the two major problems in our community, the lack of child care and the lack of housing, those are two hurdles that we want to remove as a barrier for these businesses to be able to expand. And in an effort to do that, we're trying to incentivize the building of new multifamily housing. So this could include, actually, if somebody wanted to build a duplex and live on half, and live in half of it, and rent the other half out, or sell the other half to another party, that would be included in this program as proposing it. So what would happen is you would approve this concept, and then we actually use Briggs and Morgan as our bond attorney, and they would draft a kind of boilerplate document that we would have to change for every application that we receive. And then, once we receive the application, we would have to move forward withholding the public hearing on every single project. So you would be aware and be able to approve every single project in its own. We're just going to be advertising that this is something that we're looking at doing, and if you have a project like this, to please apply so that we can look at it.
I just want to check, did the board get a packet from what Austin and Albert Lee are doing?
Yeah.
You did?
It's in the packet.
Okay. And so, this is modeled after those two cities. The one difference between our, the proposal that's being proposed by our city here versus Austin and Albert Lee is that those are five-year abatements, and we're proposing, the city is proposing, you are proposing, the economic development is proposing a 10-year, because we really need to get more housing going here quickly. And if we can get some more multi-housing going, it's going to be really good for our economic.
So is this just single housing? This is just for multi?
Duplexes or?
Duplexes or more multi, like apartment buildings?
Yeah.
That would qualify. So, actually, the other communities actually include single-family housing, but here in Fairmont, we're actually seeing more single-family housing builds than we have in the past, so we don't feel like we need an incentive to get that going.
No, I agree.
Well, that's been a great explanation. It kind of clarifies things for all of us, I believe. So, any other questions?
I did want to let you know that the, the FEED aboard, the Fairmont EDA, did approve it and forwarded it to city council. And then, the Martin County EDA was also reviewing it, and they found that in this proposal, it states that there could be one transfer, and the reason for that is thinking that somebody may want to build a number of duplexes and then sell them, and they want that new buyer to be able to have the incentive of the tax abatement as well. Martin County is, has not approved it yet, because they're looking at a number of different things. One is, they're looking at offering the program countywide, and if so, I had let them know that obviously I would be willing to administer the program if it's offered in the city limits, but I would not administer the program countywide. And I would do the same for you if you were looking at the school district. Another thing is that they're looking at doing, allowing it to transfer more than once, and just allowing it for the 10 years, no matter how many times the property transfers.
So then, it would be countywide, are you just talking, like, cities in the county? Are you talking rural?
I believe they're actually looking countywide. Rural, too.
Rural, too, okay.
But I do not know for sure. They haven't said anything in stone, they're just having conversations.
Okay. I'm just curious as to what that definition was.
I just appreciate the information that was put in the, the board packet this week, because that helped me understand a lot better the process, and how it would go down, and how it is happening in Austin and Albert Lee, too. So that, that just really cleared up the whole picture for me.
Has it been pretty successful in Austin and Albert Lee?
Yes, I did contact them, and they felt that it was definitely successful, and they could see extending the program and having it offered for longer than what they had initially thought.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
I think it's, it's great incentive, especially, you know, we're doing it for our businesses that want to expand. I mean, the 10 years, I mean, it's consistent, the 10-year, you know, why have a different year amount? And so, I think that's great, but I think that's wonderful to have that, even if it's multifamily and that. And I, I agree that the single housing doesn't need to be.
Okay. All I know is that when I moved here in 1997, and we first tried to find a place to live, coming from a college town that has tons of apartment buildings, it was extremely noticeable that it was very short on that kind of transitional housing. So if you want young people to move here, that is an absolutely key component, I think.
Well, it kind of depends, too, on the, the price of the housing, too. You know, there's, depending on when, you know, you're, when you move into town, what is your income? You can, you know, afford some housing, and some areas of the levels are very available and some aren't. And so, that does make a difference.
And since those 22 years that I've been here, as it mentioned in there, there haven't been any new apartment buildings built, you know? And I was thinking that the selection was a little slim back then. Fortunately, I was able to find a decent house rental, so.
Okay, any other comments? Nicole?
I move to approve the concept of property tax abatement for future multifamily housing units.
I'll second it.
Any final questions, discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None? Motion carries. Lindsey?
Great. I just want to thank you guys so much for being so supportive of the things that are happening in our community. Construction prices are just up so high right now, and it's very difficult to do things without incentives. So I'm, I'm very thankful that you're willing to look at doing that, and thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome.
Lindsey, we want to thank you, and I see the mayor here tonight, and we want to thank her. We really do appreciate the collaboration that the city and the school district have. We've done a lot of really good things together so far, and I'm sure we have many more things to go in the future. So we do appreciate the positive collaboration that we have together.
It's called Team Concepts.
Yes.
We have that saying for the school district, so we just, you know, that.
Did you want to speak, Mayor?
Okay.
Kind of nice to be on this side.
As, as the mayor of our city, I just need you to know, for all of you, that we appreciate the school district working with us, too, because when we work together, first of all, there's no more accountable form of government than local government, because as you have found out, you have to face people every day, as well as all elected officials at the local level do. And so, we all need to be accountable, and our working relationship that we've had with the school district has, it's just been a benefit for everybody. So thank you also, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay. We're recommending that Ariel Pyman be employed as a full-time substitute employee at the high school for the 2019-2020 school year at a rate of $125 a day. Ariel is a licensed social worker and will be applying her, for her short-call sub-license. Her responsibilities at the high school will include, but are not limited to, teaching emotional, social and emotional learning, the lessons to students in the in-school suspension room, to students who are serving lunch detentions, and developing social and emotional learning curriculum for the district to be taught to all 7th through 12th grade students during their advisory period. She'll also be serving as the high school's honor flex supervisor for the commons area, performing check-in and check-outs with students who appear on the student support team list, and supervise classes in the commons for teachers who do not have a substitute. Also, we recommend Jody Christensen has agreed to serve as a curriculum consultant during the 2019-2020 school year. She'll be working directly with Kim Niss, principal of curriculum, instruction and research as Kim transitions into her new role. This will include completing the annual student achievement report, the world's best workforce report, and the implementation of the new state curriculum standards. Jody will be contracted for up to 72 days for a total salary not to exceed $28,940. There is no penalty if Jody cannot fulfill the entire contract. So, I'll make a motion to employ Ariel as a full-time substitute employee at the high school for the 2019-2020 school year at a rate of $125 a day, and Jody Christensen as curriculum consultant during the 2019-2020 school year for up to 72 days at a salary not to exceed $28,940.
I'll second it.
Any questions?
I would, I think this, both of these are excellent ideas. I know I've been kind of out of the works and all that, but I think that's, both of these employees will serve wonderfully in our district. And so, I thank who get, who actually thought the idea up and, and had that, but that's wonderful.
It's great to see another Fairmont graduate back and working as a part of the schools, too.
Ariel?
Ariel, yep.
And Jody's knowledge for Kim to pass on, you know, that's important.
Any further questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, motion passes, and we move to board reports. Julie?
Yes, sorry, I wasn't quite ready, but anyway, Southern Plains Educational Co-op, they met on August 26, and like I said, I didn't attend the meeting because of my being unable to, so I'll just give a little report. Hiring of some new people at the spec in, be Carolyn Higgins, behavioral interventionist, David Altman, a custodian, Peter Miller, custodian, Kaitlin Tisi is a DAP teacher for this year, and some work agreements, a lane change. There is an agreement for the Fairmont schools for custodial management, Fairmont area schools for food service, for hometown sanitation, garbage, and recycling. They reviewed the employee handbook, and the Arise Academy handbook, and then the annual things that we normally, just as like our board normally does every year. And I think that was basically it. The main thing, I really did want to bring everybody's attention in that, that everybody knows that the Arise Academy is now fully, well, not fully functional, but the students were able to, the construction was completed enough so that we could start classes at the beginning of the school year, which will be better for those children that have to attend that program in those buildings. Everybody knows that sometimes those kids will have behavioral issues, that it's much easier to keep them on the even keel and not have to uproot them. And so, we were very thankful for our construction company to work really hard and get the students in there. So the students were able to start school at the fall at the Arise Academy and that. The business office will be, of Southern Plains, will be moving October, maybe November, when they get more ready for that area. So the office area is not fully functioning area, but the schools, for the students, it was available. And so, I'll pass up on to you, I have not, we had toured, gosh, I don't remember, May, June, maybe I think it was, so it was very early on. I have not been able to see it, but I did talk to one of the construction guys today, actually at Subway, but, but I, I said, you know, asked him how, and he says, "You should really see it, because it's really amazing what, what the differences have occurred," and the, you know, "How wonderful the building looks." And so, and I have the updated budget and that, so, anybody's interested.
Could we all get a tour? I'm sorry.
Absolutely.
Right, yeah.
I drive by there, you know, every couple of weeks just to see the progress, and it, it's moved fast.
Yeah, they have, they really worked. You know, and I think, honestly, the weather helped us, because it was so wet, that they were able to focus on the inside, because they weren't able to do exterior stuff. And they, well, actually, the construction, I think it's this construction manager that I talked to today, said his wife is a spec teacher, and so she, she just said, "Oh, you don't want to have them, uproot them in the middle of the year," and so.
Transition is hard for those kids.
Absolutely, and so, we are very fortunate. Maybe, maybe that is one of the advantages this year of the weather.
So the rehab of the old Lincoln Building is finished, however?
For students.
The four classrooms and the business office, that's still under construction.
And the business office area is new, because that's the elevator and stuff. I think the elevator is functional, but the business office area is, is one of the new pieces of that.
Julie, did you get any information about the attendance or the enrollment of each of the programs?
You know, I probably did get it in my email.
Okay. I know Dr. Middlestad called me last week to talk about a couple of the programs, some were up and some were down, but at that point, it was too early.
Well, there, there was a report that she said that the, they believe that there are about 45. Now, this, this was over the weekend, that, that she thought her ALC numbers were about 45 students. But they're still checking on some that have not shown up. So, you know, it's very similar from, from our numbers of enrollment as well, that, you know, they're in paper, there to be the students there, but they have not shown up actually in the classroom.
And I just want to check, because one of our counselors is in the audience, we, we have approximately six students that we know of that went to the ALC?
That's accurate, yes.
Right, that, that we actually have documented that they've gone, and they've transferred their records over. So, I questioned the 45 number, I just.
Right, and like I said, that's, that is what Sarah had written in, Sarah Middlestad, who's the director, had written in her update for the week, that it, you know, we, they usually like to have the program to be, you know, 30 or less, and it, they thought they were going to have 45, but it's, they haven't actually physically had 45 students.
Right. That's what I asked her, I asked her if she would confirm the names of the students that are from our district.
And I did not get a confirmation, I just.
We have it either, so. And I know they're busy, and we.
Oh, yeah.
And I, that's one reason why I haven't taken a tour of the, of the Arise Academy either yet, because I remember nine years ago, when we built our new elementary school, that we were still painting the night before school began. And it's, you know, I kind of want to give them a chance to get everything organized and get set up. And then, my, my question to you is, if you want to take a tour, I think we should, we could do either one, it'd be nice to see the programs in place, you know, while there's kids there during the day sometime, maybe. And, you know, we are providing the food service to them also, or Charles is, so.
There is a note here that I, I see that part of that update was, that the addition won't be done till the end of November. So, that's, but like I said, they were able to focus so much on that, to get the students in. That's, that, to me, that was the most important.
It looks a lot different than it does 30 years ago.
Did you go there?
Yes.
Did you really?
My third-grade teacher's right over there.
Okay, anything else? Entertainer motion?
Oh, first, before you adjourn, let me apologize for being late. I had court run very long, and then client meeting that was long because of that, and my hard 5 o'clock stop was then a hard 5:15, and then, seriously, I need to go, it's 5:30, and then I'm here now, so.
You're forgiven.
My apologies. With that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Can I second, Mike?
I'll second it.
All of the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Mike.
I kind of like that, just show up at the end of the meeting.